And I'll call this regular meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out to the meeting tonight, those in attendance, and also those watching the meeting on G10 television. We're going to begin tonight by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Jerry Bittner, followed by the invocation.
Join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blessed pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today just to do the business of this city and to represent the many citizens that call Jacksonville home. Lord, we ask for your blessing to the mayor and to the council as they make decisions that guide our team and that guide our community. Lord, we ask that you bless each of us as we're here tonight, and those that are not here tonight, Lord, just be with them, wherever they are, with whatever challenges that they may have. Lord, we know that a lot of people here in Jacksonville and around the world that just have weight bearing down on them and some of the pressures that may be overwhelming. Lord, we just ask for you to provide them grace and blessing and support in all that they go through, Lord, as we navigate this journey together. Lord, we're so grateful for the opportunity to be here. We're grateful for the ability to join together tonight, and we're so thankful for your many blessings. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, council, you are provided with a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to have our first section of public comment for this evening, and I only have one party signed up, and I would ask Chris and Kathy Marks if you'd come up to the podium. Thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and Joshua, good to see you again.
Good to see you, sir.
We're here tonight to talk about two events. The first one happens on November 3 at 10:00 a.m. at the Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Wall, which is across the street on Monford Road. We're going to be pinning all veterans with the 50-year commemorative pin and a proclamation from President Donald J. Trump honoring the 50-year anniversary of the ending of the Vietnam War. We're going to pin any person that was active duty in the military in that era, and we would like to ask the city council, city manager, employees who may fall into that category to please attend this ceremony, as they're going to be pinned with that commemorative pin. They're going to be handed a proclamation signed by the president, and they're going to get what they deserve that they didn't get 50 years ago, and that is a thank you and a welcome home. They should have gotten it then, they're going to get it November 3. I'd like to follow that up with one other thing. We represent wreaths across America. Our local group is wreaths honoring our fallen veterans, and on December 13 at 12:00 noon there will be two ceremonies held here in Jacksonville and Onslow County. At 9:00 a.m. at Onslow Memorial Gardens, we will be placing wreaths and having a ceremony for the 1,500 veterans that are lying in rest there, and at 12:00 noon, a ceremony will be held over here at the Coastal Carolina State Veteran Cemetery where volunteers will be laying wreaths to the veterans who are rest in peace over there. I do like to take this opportunity to let the citizens know that at this cemetery there are approximately 6,000 veterans laying in rest, and we only have 2,500 wreaths right now for them. We don't want to be short. At Onslow Memorial Gardens, there are 1,500 veterans. We have 500 wreaths at this moment. If anybody would like to contact us, and I hope this is okay to say, they can contact me at (910) 389-8698, or visit our website, wreaths honoring our fallen veterans, for information on how to make donations for a wreath. It's only $17, and I assure you, if you've been out shopping already for Christmas, as the decorations are out, a live balsam wreath, average retail rate, $44. With ours, they're $17. They get laid on a veteran's grave site, and when the ceremony occurs, we mention that veteran's name real quick. I'll use my dad, God rest his soul. Chief Warrant Officer 3, John B. Marks, thank you for your service. God rest you. That's how it's going to happen. We hope to see you there on November 3 and on December 13. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Great work in recognizing our veterans. Okay, council, we'll go on to the adoption of minutes from the October 7, 2025 workshop meeting, and also the two consent items that are on the agenda this evening.
Move adoption of the minutes and consent items as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We go down to item number three on the agenda, and... Bear with me just a minute, things aren't working. This is a map amendment for rezoning of 1114 Jacksonville Parkway and 690 Trade Street from residential multifamily high-density to corridor commercial, and Ryan King will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council. Hope you all are doing well. Item 3 before you, as the mayor just indicated, is a rezoning request. This application has been submitted on behalf of GMP MFH LLC, which is to rezone these two parcels of land totaling around eight and a half acres. As stated, the current zoning is residential multifamily high-density, and the proposed rezoning would take it to corridor commercial. They neighbor one another and share common ownership. The picture on the screen before you is the two highlighted parcels that are at the intersection of Jacksonville Parkway and Trade Street. To kind of orient council, the Walmart is over here on this side. It's not working, let's see. So, the new Wawa's right here. Everybody knows where the new Wawa, I believe, is. So, Lowe's Home Improvements are over here, and there's a couple hotels along that area. So that's the location of where the property's proposed for rezoning. The screen before you shows you the current zoning on the, under the existing slide, and then the proposed identifies what the parcel would look like if council chooses to amend the zoning map tonight. The Camel Land Use Plan identifies this entire area as regional commercial, which supports and is consistent with the corridor commercial zone. Staff has identified through the public hearing process, we've placed three signs on the tracks, we've sent out the required notices through the newspaper and mailings. And with this rezoning request, last week, Planning Board recommended approval, and with rezonings, the city council needs to determine two items. Is this proposal consistent with the land use plan? And even if it's not consistent, that's okay too. You just need to include within your motion a consistency statement. And is the rezoning reasonable? And we identify the reasons why we believe that the rezoning would be reasonable under the findings of fact A through J. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have.
I know this is a rezoning here, and this is a little bit early in the game. We don't know as of yet what might go there, but that trade, that trade street is a traffic problem getting back onto Western Boulevard. Is there any way, anything that's going to happen that may, you know, you got that one, what is it, not Slim Chickens, but Jaggers.
Jaggers.
I mean, they're fighting, they're fighting for egress there. How's that going to be avoided later on if you're going to put another commercial business in there?
So with the, as identified in the staff report, with rezonings, we typically don't look to have traffic impact analysis prepared, but if the development triggers the transportation impact analysis, one would be performed to analyze what the impacts are of this development. Right now, it's, we don't have any development proposals.
Just to keep in mind for later.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, Ryan? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll open up the, recess the regular meeting and open up the required public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, close the public hearing, reconvene, and council, you being asked to approve the rezoning request.
May I make a motion that we approve the rezoning request because it's consistent with the Camel Land Use Plan, and it's reasonable based on findings of facts A through J in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have a... Mine does not want to work. Number four on the agenda tonight. This is a public hearing of Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, amendment to Article 5.4, fences and walls, and Mr. King, you'll be presenting this item also.
Thank you, Mayor. This text amendment before you tonight is kind of a carryover to what we had brought before you last month, and there's just a few additional strike-throughs that we would like to have the council consider. I believe I mentioned it at the meeting, last meeting, but it just didn't make it into the motion, so we're bringing it back forward for council to codify those changes. The amendment that council did approve, this is the new diagram that's, will be in the Unified Development Ordinance that identifies where the six-foot fences can go. Specifically, this is a corner lot on this end, that basically the six-foot maximum height of the fence can go all the way out to the property line now, and we just want to eliminate that number three that's in the ordinance to just help clarify that to where there's no confusion or questions. The consistency statement, we believe that this amendment is consistent with the Camel Land Use Plan, and reasonableness is not required for text amendments. And the Planning Board at their meeting last week recommended in favor of this text amendment as does staff. Be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Ryan? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
There's a required public hearing on this matter, and at this time, I'll recess the regular meeting and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Please indicate by raising your hand. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and reconvene the council meeting. Counsel, you being asked to make that adoption there.
Make a motion that we approve the text amendment as it is, as it is consistent with the adopted Camel Plan, and it is reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have another Unified Development Ordinance UDO text amendment. This is amendments to Articles 3.6, non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts, Article 5.12 signage, and Article 9 definitions. And Mr. King will be presenting this item also.
Thank you, Mayor and council. One more item, and then you can get rid of me for the evening. This is one of many text amendments that we, we are looking to bring forth to council, as was the last one, where we're going to continue to update the UDO with items that we feel necessary that council should consider for adoption. This is specifically, it basically breaks down, there's three parts here to this proposal. The first one will be to reorganize the signage components into one section. Currently, the downtown signage is found in Article 3, and all the other signage regulations are found in Article 5. This first part is going to be basically blend the two together into just Article 512, and that way, sign companies, customers, staff, we just have to go to Article 5. That's where all of the standards will be. So we think that that is just a matter of moving it from one section to the other. That will be a benefit to everybody, because that's pretty straightforward. The second component to this is amendments to downtown signage regulations specifically. And the area on the map before you in blue is basically what we consider the downtown business zone, which is this shade of blue here. I'm not sure what shade you all would consider that, but that's the downtown area nonetheless. And then you have downtown residential that it would be applicable to as well, which is kind of a green shade. Although, last time I mentioned colors, somebody up on the, at the planning board, I think it was, on the screen said, well, the shade of color up there was slightly different than what I was seeing, so... But those are the two downtown areas. So this would be applicable for the downtown signage components. And right now, it's, it's the only thing that we're talking about with this amendment is dealing with secondary facades. And currently, the ordinance says that for secondary facades, so anything other than the primary, that the only thing that one can have is a channel set lettering. And we have one example of a downtown sign that's a channel set lettering, even though it's on the front, it's still an example, that this is the only style sign that you can have in the downtown for secondary facades. I believe that it probably should have said that this type of signage is, was prohibited. All other sign types wouldn't be allowed. Because what that means is, these sign types that are on the screen before you, currently, based on the way the ordinance is written, you can do none of these on secondary facades. So we met with the planning board in a workshop session and floated this idea by them back in August, and then we brought this back to them last month, or the last meeting last week, and they are support of this change. And as you can see here, that, you know, you have a projection sign, which is this style. This is on a painted-on sign. This is, and may have to put Lisa on the spot, I can't remember the sign, there's a specific sign type, so... And then the halo sign, which is where you have some backlighting, and then this is just your typical shoebox-style sign. So this proposal would open up these sign options, and then the example here in the middle is, is a vinyl directly applied to the brick. None of those sign types are currently allowed. If council amends this ordinance tonight, every one of these sign types would be allowed moving forward. So I want to give you an example of a painted-on sign on a secondary facade. This is one that's just real close to City Hall, it's easy to walk out the back door, take a picture. We had some information. This is a 24-foot tall building by 90, length, so it's 2,160 square feet. If this proposal passes tonight, they would be able to put 216 square feet of signage on this side, and it could be different types. Painted-on, it could be the channel set letterings, it could be any of those examples that I just gave you. So if this passes tonight, this is what would be allowed on a secondary facade. We do intend to continue to work forward with murals, and we'll be bringing that back to the Planning Board and City Council in a future session. And then the third and final component about this amendment is just a little house cleaning item. Currently, the, there's a five-square-foot exemption, it's, it's not exemption, I'm sorry, it's a five-square-foot freebie that's eligible for non-downtown folks for the door, the primary entrance. We don't say what can be there, because that would be regulating content, we just say you get an additional five square feet. We're proposing to move that from a permit-required five-square-feet to the article in 512, which is going to be a permit-exempt, which means you don't have to pull a permit as long as you stay under 10 square feet at the entranceway. So for downtown, currently, they get to choose three types. This is one of them, so this will be a freebie in downtown, and then they'll be able to choose between the other three types, so that'll be a benefit to downtown. It'll be a benefit to everybody, because they won't have to pull a permit for it as long as they stay within that 10 square feet at the entranceways. So, like I said, we can't regulate content, and then typical door dimensions, but this is pretty much at any entranceway, 10 square feet of additional signage that's free without a permit for whatever somebody wants to put on their doorway. So that's what staff is proposing tonight. Here's another example of, in case somebody doesn't know what a transom is, where you see 742, the window above the door, that's a transom, and then this is what we would consider an entranceway, so you can see with the example on the bottom, you know, they got a set of double doors, so they get 10 square feet per that entranceway. That's in addition to their normal signage. We believe that this is a, will be a benefit. We did share this with several of the sign companies, and, you know, anytime you move something to a permit excluded component, then they, sign companies, the citizens, they don't have to come through to get a permit as long as they're within that. And Michaela, she has met with the downtown businesses and has already kind of informed them of this proposed change. And Lisa is here, not to put you on the spot, but Lisa from Nowonos Sign Company is here tonight, and we appreciate her being here, and she may speak in a minute, she may not. But with that being said, we believe that this amendment is consistent, and the reasonableness statement's not required. Be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Any questions, Ryan?
Yes. Would you go back to the side signage? Continue back. There you go, right there.
All right.
Have we, have we sent a notice of violation to any of these people here on the screen?
So, most of these are not even in downtown Jacksonville. Obviously, the City Hall is, but to answer your question, no.
We have not sent a violation to the city of Jacksonville. Okay.
Well, but...
All right. I just thought I'd ask.
That's a principal facade, though.
I just thought I'd ask, you know, fair is fair, one size fits all. You tell I'm hot about something, but anyway, one size fits all.
To be continued.
To be continued. That was my only, my only, that really wasn't a question. Well, it was a question. You answered it. No, they, we did not. Okay. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a legislative amendment, so at this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting and open up a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come up to the podium, please give your name and address to the clerk.
Hi, I'm Lisa Marshburn, and address is 100 Fawn Trail. About the signage, I guess just some clarification might be needed, just as to, I believe, and I could be wrong, that says 10% on the front and 15% on the side. I guess trying to figure out why you would have more on the side than you do on your primary facade. And then, it's a little wordy as to how, what we're going to be allowed to have, as far as all the pictures that were up there, is there going to be a definition as to what is allowed and what isn't allowed? There's just a lot of paperwork involved with us in City Hall when it comes down to sign permits, so helping our paper trail and helping yours, I think, would be helpful for everybody.
Is there something we can make sure we do, is to make this clear?
Yes.
For, for people that are actually...
We make signs, we don't read all these words all the time. Less wordy makes sense.
We'd like to hear from you, I mean, as far as those sort of things. Yes, ma'am, definitely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I got another question back there, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council. I'm Carmen Spicer. My address is 59 Kerr Street, Jacksonville, downtown. I might have missed something, but my friend there, what is the purpose of why we're making the changes? Did I miss that part of it, city manager?
Do you mind, Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, part of the discussion for us has been, there are some changes that we wanted to make after reviewing some requests that have come in. So for example, the first change that's being recommended to council is to eliminate some confusion of having sign regulations in two spots. So that's the answer to one. Put sign regulations in one spot, one location, so that everybody knows where to go to find those. On the other two items, it's requests coming in, and so staff has taken that as, when requests come in from citizens or from sign companies, to prepare those amendments back to council. One of the things that the council has as priority every year is UDO review, and so as part of that UDO review, that's a council adopted initiative for FY '26, FY '25, it's so that staff reviews that and brings that back to council. These are things we've received from, from those entities, and we want to bring it back to council to allow that opportunity to review the changes.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering that, and that did explain it. So was there a problem with consistency when you say when requests came in for signs, the size or something like that? Did I, is that what the request, was there some, no inconsistency? Go ahead, Ryan.
Ms. Marsh, let me give you an example. This, we had a request that came in for the sign here in the middle. Let me clear this out real quick. Amelia, can you, can you clear the slide for me? The Beaster sign in the middle was a sign permit that came in, and we looked at it, and the ordinance states that only channel set lettering is allowed on secondary facade. So the only style sign could be like this on that secondary facade. And we said, is that really a bad thing to have a sign that looks like the one here in the middle? And we think that that is a very pleasant-looking sign. It's a way to advertise the business, and probably, I haven't priced signs, but I would imagine that this is probably in a more economical way than channel set lettering. Channel set lettering usually has, they have to be specially manufactured, they have to be, or they could be illuminated. This is simply a vinyl application on the wall. It's easily removed later on if the business changes over or changes names. So when signs, applications come in and we're not able to approve a permit, that gives us the ability to kind of look at something and say, hey, is this like it needs to be? And as Mr. Ray stated with the initiative that the council's given us to review both the downtown aspects but also our ordinance, we felt that this was something that was worthy of having a discussion with Planning Board and then bringing it before council based on our discussions with staff and also the planning board.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just chime in also. In a downtown environment, that sign shown in the middle is much more appropriate for the feel that you want in a walkable downtown, where you have older buildings and some of these things, because that's period appropriate, you might say, it's kind of reflecting back to what used to be done in the heyday of the downtown area, so it sits really well as part of the downtown revitalization effort, to make these possible and a little less restricted.
What do you think about the bottom right one there?
I like it.
The only problem, the only problem I see with that is I see buildings in downtowns all over the place that I've been. The business has been gone for 50 years, and the sign is still there, faded, can't barely read it, but it's still there. I mean, that's, that's my only, you know, right about that.
Yeah, it's true of anything, but if you paint the wall, instead, you got the same problem. Anything that's painted on or applied on top of brick or any other surface is going to have to have maintenance after a certain number of years, so you'd have to have a plan, either if the current business is going to, you know, update it when it starts to fade or weather and, or remove it. There's...
We have that in place anyway, right?
I don't want to speak, I'd have to look at that and see what, what the ordinance states specifically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Ms. Marshburn?
Yes.
What was the name of your company again?
(910) Signs.
Would you be willing to meet with staff to, to get some clarification before we... And I'll tell you why I'm asking this. Mr. Mayor, you know, one of the things that generates some of the most complaints to the council members is our sign ordinances, and how they're enforced, what we're allowed, the confusion, and I'd like to see as much of the confusion taken out of this before we go ahead and prove something that, that may or may not be clear to our people who are applying for the permit. So I would like to recommend that we table this and, and ask Ms. Marshburn to get with, with Ryan and his staff, Mr. King and his staff, and, and see if they can maybe make that a little bit clearer. If she's got questions, I'm sure the other sign companies will have the same questions. If it's not clear to her, I'm thinking it's probably not clear to all, or at least some others.
That's not, that's the rule, right?
My, my motion is to table this and allow further discussion behind, with staff.
Second.
You second his motion? Okay. Very good. Any discussion?
Are you tabling it or continuing the public hearing?
We're going to, well, we got to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. My, my, my bad.
Close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. His motion is to table it till, till such time that they are able to build a focus group, whatever, of sign companies and our staff to, to figure out.
Yes.
And make things clear so people understand what they can and can't do.
That's what I, my hope is, yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, the public just needs an opportunity to be heard on that particular issue. The public just needs an opportunity, if there is someone who wants to be heard on that particular issue, of tabling the matter until another session, if there's anyone that wants to speak about that.
I don't understand what you're saying. I don't know why, I mean, we only have one representative from a sign company here that I've met.
Yes, sir. Yep, just for quasi-judicial hearings, just in case there's anyone else who wants to be heard on the motion in particular to table the matter.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. All right. So... Does there have to be a vote to table it at this point? Just let it ride? Okay, very good. Okay. So we'll be getting with you this morning, somebody will be getting with you as far as organizing some type of group that can work on this to clarify, clarify. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. That's a good idea. Clearing all that up. All right, we're going to go ahead and go to the reports. Go ahead and do that, I'll start with you, Mr. Warden.
No report, Mr. Mayor, or proud to be here?
Glad to have you.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a report. Just to bring to the public's awareness without belaboring, many of you know that as of October 1st of 2025, our federal government went into a shutdown. And being that as it may, I happen to be one of those individuals that is currently being affected by the government shutdown. As an employee with the Department of Defense Education Activity, which is a school system aboard Camp Lejeune and Marine Corps Air Station, actually, the Department of Defense School System on Camp Lejeune actually was founded, if you can believe it, back in 1944, 81 years ago. And for our employees, currently, what that means is that we just concluded Day 21, in which we are furloughed, but we are considered expected employees, which means we are required to go to work, but we are not getting paid. We have entered into Day 21, and the furlough right now is, or the shutdown is expected to continue until this coming Sunday, which is the 26th of October. With that being said, I passionately wrote an email to the mayor and council about the status of our employees, federal employees, that call Jacksonville home. These individuals, for the duration of their time, are tax-paying citizens, they are constituents, they are the board scout leaders, the girl scout leaders, your Sunday school teachers, your baseball coaches, your football coaches. However, they have to go to work every day and be responsible for the military dependence aboard Camp Lejeune, grades pre-K through 12th grade, and we're not being paid. I passionately ask the mayor and council to consider what resources we have in place that we can extend to our federal employees with the situation, which is no fault of their own. Unfortunately, for those who have been furloughed and who are not required to report to work, unfortunately, because they're furloughed, they can't go out and work. They don't even qualify for workman's comp. They do not qualify for any services with the Department of Social Services, because many of them make too much money. So for the first time in my lifetime, I am in a position where I am having to rely on our city to be a caring community. And whatever resources that we have, I am asking the mayor and council to wholeheartedly to extend some type of assistance to our individuals who call Jacksonville home, but currently are facing a financial tsunami. Because as long as the government is in a shutdown, as the way it stands, some individuals will not be getting paid. These are very trying times. And I'm just asking for mayor and council to have a compassionate heart and empathetic heart, that we show this compassion back towards our citizens in Jacksonville.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Bitter?
No report.
No report.
Yeah, I would like to mention that organization called Soul Society, they're a couple of young men that would do a lot of our arts programs in the area. They celebrated their 10th anniversary, and they're continuing to go strong, and they want to do a whole lot more programs. Hopefully, they'll be involved with a STEM program. I know they'll have one in Maysville, but possibly will be one here within the city. Soul Society, Support, Opportunity, Unity, and Leadership.
I do want to comment on Dr. Washington's comment. I agree that the federal shutdown is a horrible thing that we're dealing with right now, and the federal employees are a part of our community. More importantly, they're a part of the fabric of our community, because we are a military host city. So we know it impacts us, I would say, more than other communities around the country. Our staff is engaged in dialogue with a number of our partners. We talk about our partners all the time that are providing services. That may be our utility companies, our electric, our water, sewer, some of our housing teams, to try and figure out what those services are, and we're going to do our best to make sure that we're providing that information back. We'll also provide some additional information back to council about that dialogue. We'll send that out to you. But the ability for the community to show the caring support that was referenced earlier by Dr. Washington is very important. And so I hope we can work towards figuring out some answers with those partners that may have the opportunity to provide that level of support. Mayor, I've got a couple items for you. The first is, the Beirut ceremony is coming up on Thursday, excuse me, October 23rd, at 10:30. As part of that event, we have the Yellow Ribbon Project. You will see here some pictures from this event. Part of the activities that go along with what we do here, this year, we had a record number of students and a record number of Beirut participants. We had 25 Beirut veterans that were present and 42 students that were present. And these are Northwoods Park Middle School students. They met with veterans, what they do is they go out, they hear the story, then they share the remembrance and the impact through the Yellow Ribbon Campaign. This is a very important process for us as a community. You can see, it's our way of, as the mayor says every year, we never forget. The way that we never forget is through educating our youth, so that they know what happened on this date and history, and how that impacted Jacksonville, our community, whether they've been here for a couple of years or they've been here all their life. It's very important that we share that message with our youth, and it's exciting to see our team bring together a group of people this year that are record numbers. Part of the shutdown potentially impacted our ceremony for Thursday. So anyone that's available to be there, I encourage you to be there. The mayor will be on the stage, he'll be providing his remarks, but that is Thursday at 10:30. Hopefully, some of these students will be able to attend, so that they can witness this ceremony and the impact it has on our community. You'll see this out at the orchard, and these yellow ribbons you're going to see throughout the community, and that just shows our commitment throughout, not just in one location, but to say that we remember those who served and who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Mayor, we also had the Sandy Run Missionary Baptist 5K and Pancake Breakfast. If you're ever going to run a 5K, I encourage you to run a 5K that ends with a pancake breakfast, and to go to Sandy Run Church, because they know how to make a delicious breakfast. Unfortunately, I don't do a whole lot of running, so I did not participate in this event, and it doesn't look like DC Dorn did any running either, but he was there clapping, and I just want you to know that our police department was there to encourage people to stay active and to run. It's great to see that we had all the support for this occasion, and to see the partnership. Once again, the only way we have success in our community is through these partnerships. I'm not sure if Reverend Churchwell actually ran the 5K, or if they just took the picture of him coming across the finish line. It does look staged, so I encourage you, if you could text Reverend Churchwell now, maybe call him when we take a recess, just to confirm. Word on the street is, he ran it, but I didn't see it personally, so we'll need a little verification. But through his leadership and the partnership we have with Sandy Run Missionary Baptist Church, we see a lot of engagement in our community. This is where success happens, citizens turning out to be active, to be present. And then for us, our police department stays engaged. This is another opportunity. We may not have been able to experience National Night Out because of the weather, but our police department stays engaged with the community in multiple events, and the community shows that level of appreciation. So to all the members of Sandy Run, to the community members that showed up, and to the police department, thank you for being active and showing why we care about our people. Thank you, Mayor.
Brian, one more thing.
Kind of to add what Dr. Washington spoke of, one thing I have tried to impart on some of the churches is to actually do some of their missionary work right here in Jacksonville. And there's a lot of organizations that's doing great work around the city. I know they were overburdened even prior to this, so I know it'll even be worse now. So instead of starting a ministry, please start contributing to those that are already established and are doing the work already. That's all, Mayor.
So I need a motion to go into closed session. We're going to discuss land acquisition. Oh, wait a minute. You have one city? That was, that's all you had? You didn't have no other?
I can do none, Mayor, I've got plenty of good stuff.
Do you have anything? Okay. All right, so let's go with closed session motion.
All right, so move.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, okay. Shall we?